Call the meeting to order, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great Father, religious stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting held April 8th, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, that motion carries. We do have five persons who have signed up to address the school board on an agenda item, and we will allow a total of 15 minutes for that public input. If you have addressed us on this particular item before, if I could ask that you might consider, unless you have new information that you're bringing, to defer your time to folks who have not spoken to us, but we'll leave that, of course, entirely up to you. So we will have that public input when we get to the elementary schedule item on the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. And good news report, Deanne.
Good evening, we're pleased to have a full room tonight to celebrate some of the top students in the Sioux Falls School District. Each year, the National Merit Scholarship Corporation considers approximately 1.6 million of the nation's academically talented students, and then names about 15,000 of them as National Merit finalists. We're very proud to announce that 20 of those students, named as finalists, attend the Sioux Falls Public Schools. Just before tonight's board meeting, we held a reception in the honor of these students, and also invited their parents to be here as well, because we know that parental support is so important. We held that here, and we honor them for their accomplishments. So they're sitting in the front row this evening, and I'm going to announce all 20 of them. Some of the students are unable to be with us due to play practice, tennis matches, and just lots of things that busy kids do. So we still honor them regardless of if they were able to join us tonight or not. From Washington High School, and I'll have you stand, and if you'll remain standing, please, and then at the end, we can show our appreciation to all of you. Jane Walsh, Brett Schumacher, Garrett Meyer, from Lincoln High School, Elizabeth Bindert, Akshay Chowdhury, Gabe Fendrick, Gillian Hilser, William Howes, Chandler Kohling, Annalise Leveque, David Mickelson, Jonathan Overstreet, Maximilian Peters, Quentin Sullivan, Elaine Taggitts, and Ian Ward, and from Roosevelt High School, Jason Johnson, Cole Adam, Ashley Garretts, and Engie Wong. These are the best and brightest of the Sioux Falls School Districts, let's congratulate them. And I'm sure all of you have had a chance to visit with them, but when you hear of asking what their future plans are, includes Princeton and a variety of other top-notch schools, and Engie's still working hard at deciding what she wants to do. I think she has great options. So we look forward to having you with us the remainder of the school year, and as I told, I think it was Brett, it sure would be nice to, in five or 10 years from now, call you up and say, hey, remember us in the Sioux Falls School District? And wouldn't it be great if you decided to come back to Sioux Falls and continue to do whatever you're doing in your career and making Sioux Falls your home as well? So we're very proud of all that you've accomplished, and certainly appreciate your parents' support as well, as we know that's so important on your educational journey. So I'll turn it back over to the board for any comments.
Comments? Congratulations. It just makes me proud to see what you all have accomplished. It makes the little bit of work that I do as a member of the board seem far more important than it is, but you are to be complimented on your hard work, your stick-to-it-iveness, and for those of you that have parents who are a little more public, you can't do anything about that, but you've obviously chosen to rise above it.
[laughing]
Congratulations to all of you.
I told a few of you, thanks for making this look good.
That's exactly right. Congratulations to all of you and to your parents, and it's just so neat to see, hear what you are all going to do, and it's such a great reflection on our school district, so thank you very much.
I just think about what you've already accomplished in the four years with us, and what you may go on to accomplish in the next four years, or who knows how many increments of four years you guys might choose to continue on, but what you've done so far is amazing, and so I know that your future is very bright as you continue on wherever your future may take you, so congratulations.
All right. Absolutely.
One comment I would make as well, I think it's awesome to see at a board meeting that we have this honoring of students, because so many times, the decisions up here, we talk about doing what we do and doing it in the best interest of the kids that we serve, and here tonight, you get that symbolic representation of not only the board who's working on your behalf, but you who have taken the fruits of the labor of this board and many boards previous to this one, and have made everybody so proud. So as Mr. Tulkey said, thanks for making the school district look good, and best of luck to you next year and on into your futures.
You're welcome to stay for the board meeting, don't feel that that's an obligation that you should have.
Look at him go.
I think there's still cake.
All right. We will move on, no conflicts of interest to deal with this evening. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, that motion carries. Supplemental consent agenda, items A, 1 through 6, Sanford Health, motion to approve those claims, please.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, that motion carries with two abstentions. Board Member Mickelson, Board Member Ryder, and now 9B, Claims to Avera.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, and that motion carries with one abstention, Board Member Parker. And we were on, are on to the reports of the superintendent, and that is where we have five people signed up to address us on the elementary schedule report, and we'll give you time to do that before we get into the report. First person that I'll invite to the mic is Elijah Hoimer, Coiner, and if you'll come forward and give us your address, and then you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, members of the school board. So my address is 3900 South Lewis Avenue. So my name is Elijah Colner, and I am a student at Patrick Henry Middle School, and I also attended Eugene Field for Elementary. So I think that music and arts are very important socially to many kids, especially elementary. It was something very important to me and to a lot of my classmates. I know that, so I, for elementary school, was in, I was in the school musical for 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade, and also 6th and 7th, and symphony strings last year and this year. And they were all very important socially, and they allow kids to form a friend group when they're not involved in sports. I know that many of my classmates would agree, because their friend groups are often the symphony and in the musicals, they, those are all, they're all arts-related, they're music, and I just know that they're very, very important to a lot of the kids, so.
Thank you, Elijah.
You're welcome.
Okay, next, Helen Jenkins. If you're interested in addressing us again, Helen, this is your, this is your time, if you want to.
My name is Helen Jenkins, my address is 3900 South Lewis Avenue. Members of the board, Dr. Maher, I am here to speak again on the issue of time and unfettered access to arts and musical education. Since the last meeting, I did take the opportunity to do a lot of reading and research, both to understand the reasons behind some of the changes and the related research on each side of the issue. I understand that the reductions to art and musical education further a budgetary objective of the district's work with the strategic consultant, which really boils down to the reallocation of resources to better support test scores. In my experience, this is not the first change designed to further test-focused goals. There's testing and testing prep four times a year, there's sort of good versus bad student instruction grouping, the platooning and departmentalization of 4th and 5th graders, a narrowed and prescriptive curriculum. The academic literature explains both the position of the proponents on that issue, which is largely to benefit test scores, as well as the opponents who are concerned about the erosion of whole-child education, long-term performance goals, and school culture. The downside is well-established, but even if we believed that test scores were an appropriate sole measure of quality education, there seems to be no valid published peer-reviewed studies actually documenting the success of these measures on improving scores. I believe that this board already recognizes the value of arts and music to education, and I won't belabor that research. It appears, though, that these benefits are not a priority goal for the district, and the downside effects are not measured or assigned weight. To assess this merits of this observation, I would urge you to review the school improvement plan for any of the district elementary schools, where the sole goal for student outcomes, including quote "high expectations for students, social and emotional growth and development", is MAP score results. That is the only goal and the only measure. Meanwhile, some of the earliest proponents of testing and standardization are joining an increasingly vocal group of experts concerned about the result of over-testing and over-reliance upon test scores. For instance, the former Assistant Secretary of Education and former proponent of national standards in the national curriculum stated, "The federal government, states, and school districts have spent billions of dollars to phase in the standards to prepare students to take the tests and to buy the technology needed to administer them online. There is nothing to show for it. The race to the top demoralized teachers, caused teacher shortages, and led to the defunding of the arts and other subjects, especially in struggling schools."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Julia Stanek.
Hi, my name is Julia Stanek, I live at 3300 East 38th Street here in Sioux Falls. I've been in the fine arts program since it was possible here in the school district. In the 4th grade, I played the cello, and still do to this very day at Washington High. In the 5th grade, I played the clarinet into my middle school. From my understanding about this proposal is to minimize the disruption in the classroom and to raise academic scores. But as I'm about to show you, I didn't go to school to learn long division and learn about Jamestown. I went to school for different reasons, such as the fine arts program at my elementary school. I'm not the smartest or the most athletic, and definitely not the most artistic, but I found my niche in the orchestra program and still believe in the people and the process today. The mission at the Sioux Falls School District is to educate and prepare each student to succeed in a changing world. That means every student needs to be prepared for the real world, and in order to succeed and release them into the world as a well-rounded person, you need the arts. Even to this day outside of school, I have to read music and understand how it works. We need to teach kids a bit of everything, and most importantly, music, before they can become a well-rounded person. The No Child Left Behind Act defines core academic subjects such as English, mathematics, science, foreign language, civics, government, economics, history, geography, and, most importantly, in my opinion, the arts. I know that you aren't cutting the arts all the way out, but each child has a right to them and not to have time they spent cut out. I believe it's in the best interest of the board to consider the repercussions of the proposal. After talking to many people against this reasoned proposal about cutting time in gym and fine arts and the arts itself, having a cookie-cutter schedule that might work in one school and not in another is definitely not the way to go. Since the issue started in elementary schools, we needed to leave it up to the schools themselves to decide. There's been an idea discussed previously amongst my peers and has been brought to the board, since it's a large hassle having children leave in between lessons and still trying to teach remaining students and catch up the ones that left behind. I believe that if we have all these fine arts kids in one classroom, they can get up and leave as an entire class at once. This would be very similar as if they were going to go to library, music, or any other thing. This discussion must occur, though, between the principal teachers and music directors of each individual school. I'm also a very active person. I become restless in class, I have an issue that I become more focused on tapping my foot than the lesson at hand. And I am much like other students in the school district, when I wasn't able to burn off my energy in a gym class. Reducing time in gym class can be morally wrong, and to educate kids at a young age, you must prepare them, which is the mission of the Sioux Falls School District. As the proposal would reduce time in a room designated to burn energy and keep kids fit, to see the results the board is trying to seek in this proposal, you must give kids time to burn out energy. If there's any child who's anything like me, having them sit through lesson after lesson is simply not the answer. If you just ask the CDC, which is the Department of Center of Disease Control, Columbia University, New York City Department, and Department of Education in Illinois, and many others, they've all published stans that physical education is important in the school system, as the CDC had states multiple times that physical activity has an impact on cognitive skills, attitude, and academic behavior, which are all components to a higher education. I urge the board to see that this is simply a scheduling issue in the schools, and don't destroy time in these programs because I've been unable to find the perfect solution to what is simply yet a scheduling issue in these schools. The arts gym are all very important to me, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Melanie Pike.
I'm Melanie Pike, I live at 1713 South Point Drive. In elementary school, I played the violin in orchestra, which I did till 7th grade, and I played the flute in band for my 5th grade year. I'm still about the fine arts with being in choir at Washington High School, and I have been in choir since 6th grade. It helped me relax and gave me something to look forward to. Music helped me learn to recognize patterns, learn how to do teamwork, it helped me with memorization skills, keeping me engaged in school, and it helped me boost my self-confidence. Music helped me feel like I could achieve things because playing those notes in the right order along with everyone else helped me see how it felt to achieve things, and made me want to continue to feel that way. The No Children Left Behind Act defines core academic subjects as English reading or language arts, math, science, foreign language, civics, government, economics, arts, history, and geography. That means that all kids have the right to all these classes and the equal amount of time in each class. So cutting the arts down by 20%, which is what I saw you put in your plan, but cut the time that these kids have to feel the same feelings I had and learn the same things I had by 20%. For gym class, it would have been the time for me to run around with my friends and be able to play games I would just couldn't do outside because it wasn't safe and we didn't have the right equipment outside. Gym have offered me a place to burn off my energy and be able to just have a little fun for a while. With living in South Dakota, we know we can't always go outside to have recess, so if we cut down the amount of time that kids have in gym, that'd make it so kids would have more energy, and then they wouldn't be able to sit down and just listen because they have too much energy built up in them, which would then lead to more chaotic time for the teacher to try to keep the kids sitting down and listening. And this cut, or if this cut does happen, that'll just make it so kids have to take more tests, and in this world, it doesn't matter if you can learn something in a week and be able to display it on a test. Today in this world, we need to be able to know common sense like how to work in groups, self-confidence, discipline, coordination, et cetera, which is, music is able to teach you, and some of the stuff that we just can't learn from the classes that we take. From the years of schooling I've done already, the only thing that I can say that I really know well is to learn something in a week and to be able to display my knowledge a week, or that following week on the test. The tests we take in school determine our past in school, it determines if we can get into a certain class and makes it so, some people don't seem as smart as others, but really it's just that they don't care about what they're learning at that time. When people join music classes, it's because they want to actually, or they actually enjoy that, and that's what they want to learn. And I give my time to the floor.
Thank you. Heather DeWitt.
Hi, my address is 2200 South Bonson Avenue. So I'm here to request that you change district policy to ensure that the needs of students are kept in mind in future scheduling decisions. I'd like it if you could please make sure that students receive a minimum of 70 minutes of instructional time per regular five-day week in each of the areas of art, physical education, and music. Also, that students that sign up for orchestra will receive a minimum of 80 minutes of instructional time per regular five-day week within the school day, not during specials or lunch, with at least 40 minutes of that time in small group instruction. Same for band. I'm here because I was really surprised that our district would have even considered a schedule with any reduction in critical instruction time for our kids. I was puzzled by that, and then I realized that maybe we've just taken that gift of fine arts and physical education for granted, including those amazing teachers. I'd hear kids, about kids across America having decreased time in those areas, and think that could never happen in Sioux Falls. And then I realized that advocacy isn't seasonal, and we shouldn't only do this when things aren't okay. We should be here thanking our administrators for valuing the arts when they do a good job, so that you all know we care. So I won't make that mistake twice. Our district is far too great to be any less than what is best for students. There are decades of studies showing that students excel as people and academically when arts programs are strong. Research is clear that students in band and orchestra receive many benefits from their time in those classes, so much so that missing some time from the regular education classroom doesn't negatively impact their academic achievement, it enhances it. I see that schedules are a challenge, but I hear classroom teachers loudly saying that specials, band, and orchestra aren't the primary problem. They say that they're being asked to attend too many meetings, they don't have enough planning time, student behaviors are a challenge, too much technology is hurting the attention spans of kids, and that their classes are too large. None of that is caused by band, orchestra, music, art, or PE. As a matter of fact, I would say some of those things are helped by those areas. Even student behavior has proven to be positively impacted by exposure to visual arts, music, physical education. Research on executive function is incredible, connects what the teachers are telling us is true with what we see on paper. I've sent you the input from hundreds of people, and some teachers, and some strong studies, and so I want to make sure you know that embedded band and orchestra will do substantial damage to those programs, it's not okay. My hope is that in addition to what you've been given that touches your brains, that you'll maybe visit our Facebook group and read the many, many stories from students, parents, teachers, and community members that'll touch your heart, because that's the incredible thing. Our district is educating whole people. Thank you.
All right. Dr. Maher.
All right, we have four reports of the superintendent tonight. The first report is the elementary schedule report from our Curriculum Services Department. Here to deliver that report is Dr. Teresa Boyson.
There you go, good evening. Tonight, I bring you the elementary scheduling report. It feeds the strategic plan, which is our guiding north star for everything that we do here in the Sioux Falls School District, and really looking at student outcomes and the priority statements, 1 and 2, so a rigorous, effective, engaging curriculum, and then priority statement 2, continue to foster environment of high expectations, combined with focused interventions and supports to meet the learning needs of the students. And then embedded within that is our strategic initiative, 1.55, explore alternative elementary daily schedules, and also 1.6.1, continue to build collaboration models, foster inconsistent and effective teams to support the data. So when we think about that elementary schedule and the conversations that have been going on for four years, started with Dr. Maher when he joined the Sioux Falls School District, and he held focus groups with all employee groups, and really listening sessions to find out the strengths of the district, and then also to listen to all those staff. And one thing he heard was the teacher's desire for a better schedule to support students. And then as we review the data and the bright spots across the district, we see that certain classrooms and grade-level teams are having achievements that far out exceed the rest of them. So then when we look at that, we say, what are the practices that are happening there? And we see collaboration, teamwork amongst those grade-level teams that are achieving those results. So then we look at building a better schedule, how do we do that? So this fall, we convened a committee to really look at those bright spots and research and explore the schedule design to allow individual schools to maximize their learning time and the impact on students. And the committee began by reviewing building and classroom schedules, we looked at best practices, we looked at our current practices, and future opportunities. And so when you think about the Sioux Falls School District in the elementary, we have 23 buildings, and what are the goals that we want to meet with that? And so that team really looked at the goals, and we wanted to protect that core instruction, make sure that all students have access to Tier 1 instruction, and that's that base instruction that all students need. Student-centered, so less transitions, meaning when I'm in this classroom, I don't have a student leaving for therapy, I don't, speech, other resources that they need, maybe it's other types of lessons, because that impacts, even if I'm not involved in those, it impacts my instruction and the amount of time in my classroom. And then also looking at using staff effectively to flood for core enrichment time, so that way, if I'm a grade-level team of four, we can work together to reduce my work... And then daily core enrichment occurs separately, so that way we have a time, it doesn't matter if I need support in math or reading or I need enrichment, because I've met my core standards. All students have access to core enrichment. And then daily collaboration and planning for teachers, because if we're working together as a team to share that workload, we need to be talking to each other and have time and opportunity within the school day to be able to do that. And so that's really what the scheduling committee wanted. These are the goals they outlined, saying this is going to help our staff, this is going to help our students to meet those outcomes. But when you think about it, it's like a Rubik's Cube, because to get all of those things to line up and those colors to match, it's a puzzle. When you think about our buildings, we have 476 classrooms, we have 29 music teachers, 26 art teachers, 27 PE teachers, 22 librarians, we have 11 orchestra teachers that work in the elementary, and we have seven band teachers. And then you take the 65 special education, 23 EL, 6.5 gifted, and 44 related services therapies. Over 700 schedules you need to try and put together. So when you think about that, that job is huge. It'd be different if in my building, I had my staff and I don't have to share them with anybody else, but financially, we can't do that. We need to make sure that, because those music teachers, some of them go between buildings, some of them go between two or three buildings during a day. Same thing with art, music, PE, library, they're in their own buildings, a couple of them share, but our EL teachers share, we share our gifted, we share our therapies, we share our special ed. So the job is large. So when we looked at that, with that steering committee, that's when we contracted with a district management group to help support that process, and really looking at how do we help to make a better schedule. And so how this scheduling process worked, in September and October, the committee met, we researched best practices, we defined those goals that we just read, we reviewed all those different schedules. October, we contracted with the district management group. In November, the principals completed a survey that they put out so they could receive input, because every building is different, and we recognize that. In December and January, they collected, analyzed those schedules, the enrollment, the staffing data, current approaches to teaching and learning, our negotiated agreement, they looked at all that information, and they assessed our strengths and opportunities for growth. In January, there was an onsite visit where the schedule, every building could bring a scheduling team to meet with them individually, so they could hear about their building, but also hear about their wishes, dreams, and hopes. And in February, we held a scheduling best practices workshop, and they spent time with us, with the principals, to review master scheduling best practices, review current strengths and opportunities. In the workshop, they reviewed the information that they had collected. And so during that time, we looked at what are those best practices within that? And they're right here, all students will have access to the core instruction, it's protected, so all students have tier-one instruction, so they're not pulled out of that tier-one. Core enrichment is scheduled to provide for all students. Students are regrouped to meet the needs of all, and collaboration and common planning time daily for teachers, so that way they can talk about that data and really look at how best to move the students forward with their goals. And that's visible learning for all, all students set their own goals and know what they have to do to get there. And specials are scheduled in a common block, and that common block of time allows teachers to have time together within the day. And here's a question we ask, what would you do with an extra month of reading? Well, with an extra month of reading, how can I access an extra month of reading? Well, within that elementary schedule, if I'm sharing specials amongst buildings, when you're in my building, that's when I get you to, for art, music, PE, but that allows gaps in time. So we might go to a special, we might come back, we have 10 minutes, and then we have to go to recess or on to a next special or to lunch. Well, that 10 minutes adds up to an extra month over that course of that year. And so if we can build a better schedule and that alignment, we've gained back time for kids. So 10 minutes a day equals a month of learning for students. And so that's why really looking at how do we build schedule for 23 buildings with over 700 schedules to best meet the needs of our kids. So during February, in that best practices workshop, we really looked at those current strengths, we reviewed the information, and we created a draft schedule. And that draft schedule was presented to staff during the first week of April. The draft schedule was designed after a model in the Sioux Falls District that is showing results. Hawthorne Elementary redesigned their schedule for the current year. The draft schedule utilizes a rotation, an ABC rotation, to protect the core instruction, provided core enrichment based on student needs, and block scheduling allowed for systematic and consistent routine, allowing push-in and pull-out services to occur outside that tier-one instruction. And the winter math map results for fifth grade indicate 89% of their students met their yearly goal by Christmas time. And so in four months, they met their yearly goal, and for that growth. And so that's opportunity for them, and that shows what works within the Sioux Falls School District. And these are some of the things that we considered then. Staff indicated they wanted more time within the contracted day to collaborate in order to meet the needs of students. We recognized that placement of specials and recess is important for the flow of the day. Schedule that honors all teachers as educational professionals, and common instructional time across the grade levels to make collaboration and differentiation easier. We considered three models at the first, before we presented that first draft, we considered the three-day model, and that's what Hawthorne uses. They use an ABC model, so they rotate their specials that way, and that worked for them because they're a three-section school. So that way they can rotate that, their FTE allows for that. However, most of our buildings in the district are four-section buildings, and so a four-day rotation works best. And so that way, when we're scheduling, we work in combinations of four or eight. So they had to, and when I was talking to the elementary groups, when we had listening sessions, I said, you can make groups of eight. You can make three and five, two and six, four and four. So that's when you're assigning teachers to buildings, they need to make those combinations of four. So that's why we presented a draft schedule of a four-day rotation to utilize that ABCD schedule, and it supported the special schedules, so the students don't miss the same special on days off. So currently, if I have, we're in a five-day rotation, and whatever special I have on Monday, I always have that special on Monday, whatever special on Tuesday, Wednesday, et cetera. Well, currently, our students that have specials on Mondays and Fridays miss an average of seven specials a year, just based on our calendar and the days off. And so this rotation would eliminate that, so all students, not, the students that have specials on Mondays and Friday wouldn't always miss their special. And so that way, that helps to promote that and increase their specials' time. So that's what that current, that draft schedule looked at throughout that. And then throughout those listening sessions, we gathered the feedback, and that's some of the feedback we heard, is that that four-day rotation, in that rotation, we embedded band and orchestra on, you know, in my example, I said on Thursdays, if you have band and orchestra, you'd miss a special. Well, that doesn't work. You know, and again, that was a conversation, that was what we needed to gather from those groups, and so now we're back at the drawing table. That schedule is not a schedule that's going to work for Sioux Falls schools. And so what do we need to do? We gathered the feedback from the community, the parents on the draft schedule. The feedback was shared, and it's been reviewed to help guide the committee to develop other draft schedules through April and May for implementation in the fall, that's a goal. The scheduling committee will work with teachers from all content areas to develop and refine the schedule. The committee will strive to create a schedule that protects core instruction, is student-centered with less transitions, allow grade-level core enrichment time, daily collaboration and planning to support staff, and the end result is one that allows the district to main its longstanding commitment to all subject areas. So again, April, we have a week left, scheduling groups of teachers to come in to talk and look at schedules. Is this going to work? Is this not going to work? Gather their feedback again, and then we're back at that drawing table. And then as we work through the summer, that's when elementary principals get their allocation of FTE and work through that. This is a cost-neutral proposal, so there's no cuts to fine arts. Teachers, so they are there, and really looking at ability to build that best schedule. So in summary, in keeping with the district's commitment to engaging all stakeholders to improve working and learning environments, the district held focus groups in 2016 where elementary teachers requested fewer transitions throughout their day, so students had longer blocks of learning. The district studied the possibility and enlisted the help of a nationally-known group to ensure best practices, were at the heart of the future work. A draft schedule was developed and presented to teachers. Feedback was collected from teachers, parents, and community members, and will help guide the committee in developing other draft schedules through April and May. The end result will be one that allows a district to maintain its longstanding commitment to the subject areas. I stand by for questions.
Questions for Dr. Boyson.
Yeah, I have a few. The, one of the things you just mentioned was the feedback that you're gathering right now, holding meetings, things like that. You said teachers, are we including fine arts teachers as well in those conversations?
Right. So in those three meetings in April, we had, the first meeting, I did not gather written feedback, the second two, but there were fine arts, special education teachers and PE teachers within those groups to the last, the second two meetings, and we did gather written feedback. I've received emails, we've had public input from those, and yes, we're looking at all that feedback. Now moving into next week, we'll have additional meetings to look at that, too.
Okay. Thank you. The, I thought too, just for the benefit of everybody, you know, we know who the district management group are, because we've got a relationship with them from previous work that they've done with us and continuing work, but maybe just explain that so people don't think that it's just this, who's DMG?
So the district management group, they have, they helped us with our work with our strategic plan that guides everything that we do. And so that was a group that we had worked with. Before that time, we worked with them on some speech scheduling and looking at those practices across the district, too. So it goes back at least six years, our relationship with the district management group. And it used to be DMC, but now it's DMG, so, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then I think my only other question is, and it sounds from, you know, what you've told us tonight, that, you know, these models can be flexible within the building, so the building principal can have the flexibility of choosing which works best for their building?
I'm glad you said that. Next week, the DMG is, will schedule a call with each principal. And so again, they gathered feedback from them individually in November, and then now again, they're going to reach back out to them, because every building's different. You know, we have, you know, buildings the size of Discovery and Pettigrew, and we have buildings the size of LBA and everything in between, and so what works in one building isn't going to work for others. And so how, what, and what's unique? We have buildings with Code of the Future, we have Eugene Field, we have All City, you know, so those are the things that they need to understand more intimately about each building, and they'll take time to do that.
All right, thank you.
That was good, because I wanted clarification on the autonomy of each of the building after this study. The other thing, what I think is important to point out, so I don't know if it's really a question, it might be more of a comment, is, you know, this came from a part where Dr. Maher, who's listening and so forth, heard there were concerns. It wasn't a nefarious action that we wanted to get budget monies away from the arts, nor to, you know, do, take their time to reading instruction. This was just a challenge within the district, within the buildings of how to schedule these elementary. And what I am proud to see is how you're taking now the feedback, you know, once we found out maybe this was not going to work, we've taken feedback from parents and teachers and community members, and going back to the drawing table, and hopefully going to come back with something that will be much more acceptable to everybody in the district. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Boyson?
Okay. I just ask for acknowledgement of the report.
Okay. Could I get a motion to acknowledge the report, please? So out.
Second.
Further discussion.
I just, I appreciate the update, and, you know, we know that this is just a step in the process, that we are not, we're not at the finish line by any means, so, so just, I appreciate all the work that you've done, meeting with everybody, taking input, and it's, it is a Rubik's Cube.
It really is. And one thing, whatever we implement in the fall, we'll continue to revisit and revise. And so it's not, whatever it is, as we do every year. Every year, we look at, every building builds a new schedule every year, so, thank you.
It just shows our continued transparency and hearing and trying to do what's best for the district. As a board member, I appreciate that.
Any other discussion? One quick comment from me. I appreciate the parents that have chosen to speak to us, I appreciate the students who have chosen to speak to us. That is very important. My kids, when they were in school, were involved in the arts, and that was a huge piece of their education, and appreciate the time spent on this. One thing that I would say is, I also had a son who was in special ed, and our budget this year did have some special ed cuts, and what I have taken notice of is that I received one phone call from a grandparent of a student in special ed in our district concerned about the impact to their grandchild of those cuts, and it appears to me that perhaps our parents, whose kids are students in our special ed programs, are a little overwhelmed every day just getting through the day, and I'm sure that they could use some very strong advocates on their behalf as well, so just something to consider as we move forward. So, we have a motion in a second. If we have no further discussion, all those in favor of acknowledging the elementary schedule report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign that motion carries.
Second report for the night is the 2018-19 calendar report. I would draw your attention again to 2018-19 calendar report. It's kind of like when we do the budget, we're always in a different phase in the budget. This is the current calendar that we're sitting in right now, and how are we going to finish that out? And I'm sure Dr. Nold will clear it up for you tremendously.
I will become known as the calendar person from here forward.
You're already known as the calendar person.
This is the recommendation for the changes to the 2018-19 current-year calendar as we go through, and the recommendations being brought forth to you are proposed changes to the 18-19 school year calendar to account for the days we have missed this year due to the inclement weather. So in the process of this, the background of this, there was four days this year that we had lost due to the cancellation of school due to inclement weather, those being January 18th, 30th, February 7th, and April 11th, the most recent one here. Looks like it's pretty smooth sailing from here forward.
What on earth?
The 18-19 calendar change request, there's two different phases to this. The first part of this would be the student portion of the calendar change, and the first part is the recommendation to have the final student day of school be on May 24th, that's Friday, May 24th. The original date was Tuesday, May 21st. You can see in that that there's three days of the four that would be recovered then, and that would complete the students in the final day on the 24th, their graduation coming on the 26th. That'll also keep both of the semester tests within that same week, because the semester test for the high school students who would be impacted by that would be the 23rd and the 24th. We have verified- That'll also keep both of the semester tests within that same week, because the semester test for the high school students who would be impacted by that would be the 23rd and the 24th. We have verified through our minutes that we do have enough required minutes at all of our schools to be able to cover the state minimum requirements in minutes. We're well in excess of that still at this point in time. So the first part of the recommended change would be the student day. The student days to be made up, three of the four, and the final student day would be on May 24th, which is a Friday. Then the staff portion of that, the staff professional development day, the staff days would be made up, will be four of the four. One of the days would be on that Tuesday, May 28th, that'd be a staff professional day. There'd be a split between building time and district time for the professional development on May 28th, Tuesday. And then the teacher work day, which traditionally will follow the semester, we move from the 22nd all the way to May 29th. And this would be allowed to be work remotely to fulfill the end-of-year obligations for the teacher work day. So for the staffing, they will make up four out of the four, with the professional development day, building, and district split on the 28th. And the 29th would be the teacher work day, and that can be made remotely as long as they fulfill the end-of-year obligations. Final part of this is just to adopt the revisions of the 2018-19 school calendar as presented. I'd stand by for any questions.
Questions for the calendar guy? All right. May I have a motion to adopt the revisions to the calendar, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Just to appreciate the clarif, the decision made today, hopefully, knock on wood, no more snow days. So I'm sure that everyone here at the table has been getting questions from family, friends, and neighbors, so hopefully this will put all that to an end. So, thanks.
And just an FYI, we're pushing back when we'll do the 2021 calendar to what meeting?
That'll be in the next month here, so that'll be at the end of this next month. We're waiting with the South Dakota High School Activities Association, and people we know close to that have given us the information that's probably ready to move forward.
Perfect. Thank you very much, just for benefit of everyone else. Thank you.
I know we're presenting it here tonight, but is, will there be a formal communication out to our parents, or teachers, or with the end date? Yes? Thank you.
Absolutely.
I know a lot of people are watching right now, but for those that aren't, I want to make sure they get the information.
Good question. We will forward that information, and have forwarded the initial report pending board approval out to all the building administrators, and we'll share that out then with all the schools and the parents and staff formally.
All right. We have a motion in a second, no further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion carries.
Okay. Our third report tonight is a capital improvement plan update, and you recall that we decided once we passed the bond issue last September, that the last board meeting of each month, we'll do a capital improvement plan update. Here we are in April already. We are really moving along, and here to present to us tonight is Jeff Kreider from Operational Services.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to go over what's currently happening and what some of the future things we're going to be doing as we enter into the summer and to the fall. So, I'm going to start out with Jefferson High School. Currently, the land purchase has been complete, zoning has been submitted and has been approved. Site plating is complete as well. That's been processed through, all the assessments and that thing has been processed, so that's completed as well. Traffic impact study is underway, that's something that's been required from the city, looking at that whole site, and they're looking at Marion Road and how that's going to impact us, they want to know our impact of that, that design work. Design work is ongoing, design development work was completed last week, April 12th. The bid packages has been, Phase 1 bid packages are out, I said they'll be out sometime, they are out now, it's been advertised, and we're going to be submitting, or getting bids on May 3rd on site work, site utilities, foundations, steel, precast, and the Terry Avenue construction. So basically, the shell of the building and the earthwork. We're going to still be working on design development and construction documents, and that will be Phase 2 and 3 with the design teams with casework, interior finishes, and those sort of things. So we're not completely done yet, so people that are part of that design team, they still have some work to do. So, that's ongoing. We're also going to be finalizing the Terry Avenue cost sharing with Southeast Tech, Boyce Partners, and the district. So there's a lot of pieces and parcels that fall into that construction, and we're going to the end of, our goal is to go to the end of Southeast Tech's property, so then we can do it in a bid package and meet the state laws and those sort of things. They'll take care of Terry Avenue, the Boyce Partners beyond that, probably later, but our goal is to get Terry Avenue constructed this first year, so we can access the building site from Terry Avenue when the city does some work on Marion Road. So we're trying to coordinate all that as we go through. Contractor will be submitting a guarantee of maximum price to the district in May. You'll probably, the steering committee will probably see that mid-May, and then we'll be bringing that to the board for approval at the last meeting of May. So that's where they'll guarantee they're going to build that building for a certain amount, and there'll be some contingency built into that. So this is a construction manager at risk, and those things will be happening through them. So what are we going to do in the future? We're going to develop the plans for Phase 2 and 3, like I said, through summer and fall. Those bid packages will be late summer, early fall, they'll have that. Then we'll know if we're going to hit those marks, and how much contingency and those sort of things will be used. The district will then develop furniture and equipment plans, and that will be bid in 2020. So we'll be laying all those sort of things. We've done a lot of preliminary work, we have to know where the electrical and those sort of things, and what some of those power draws. So we'll be building on that, but movable furnishings and those sort of things as we go. The plan, the project remains on the original schedule, with the completion in spring of 2021, with the fall of '21 moving and start. So, I'm breathing a little easier than I was.
You're doing a really good job.
So, it's been, it's been interesting. But then, moving on to Ben Rifle Middle School, the land purchase was completed last, last week, so that has been closed. Zoning has been submitted and was approved before, prior to the land. Site plating, that was submitted the day after we closed on the land, so that's down there. Talked to the city today, gave them the first week of May, that I'd like to have that processed through. Faith Avenue cost-sharing agreement is completed, I think you acted on that tonight. So that is all in place. Construction document work is ongoing, should be done at the end of this month. I'm supposed to have the final documents to review by the end of April, and we'll be putting that bids out, putting the project out for bids in mid-May. I'm hoping by mid-May, so depending on how much I, the review process is going. But mid-May with bids in June, and hopefully by the last board meeting in June, we'll have that award as well. So then we'll be on our way, and we should be able to hit our marks, and that stays on task for being completed by 2021, spring of 2021, and for opening that '21 school year as well. What we'll be doing in the meantime with that is, we'll be doing the construction, but we'll be developing plans for furniture and equipment of that building as well. So, that's that one. The third one for this first year is Memorial Middle School Music Edition. That was bid in March 21st. The board approved it on April 8th, that is within budget. Work will begin by the end of April, I believe. We have a pre-construction meeting, I think, this week, so we'll be sitting down with the building and staff and talking about what doors we can, and when we're going to start, and where the staging areas and those sort of things. We did that with the building before we start, so there'll be some rerouting of exiting in that building, so we keep everybody safe during the, during the process in that one month period. Goal is to be completed by August 2019 for the start of the school year, so that one's on, on track as well. So what's next? What group, what the, the next five is, we're planning on doing RFP sometime this summer for architectural services. Not all of these will be done at the same time, but the architectural, we're going to do a major architectural proposal to get, get these things done, and get them, at least the architects onboard, and we can have maybe a little, little easier way to get through and work through the staff next year on some of these projects. But Robert Frost, the entrance and gymnasium expansion, that will be bid January, February of 2020. Horseman entrance and classroom addition, that also will be bid January, February of 2020. Lower Wilder ADA, elevators, new stairway, and some miscellaneous renovations there, and that, that, too, will be on that same 2020 timeframe. Cleveland Elementary, new gymnasium, multipurpose room, and art room. That will be bid in January, February of 2021. So we're going to, we're going to start the design process a little early, but that'll be for the following summer. And JFK will actually be in December of 2021, so that will be in that same budget cycle, but start that following, the next year. So those are kind of the major projects. There'll be some smaller ones in there, and we'll look at the architecture of record with some of those smaller ones, but we're on the same track of all the projects that we outlined, and we're going to stay on that track. So with that, acknowledge your report and the status. So, a lot of work yet to do, but we're on track of what we originally said, and so far, we'll give you an update after both middle and high schools are bid, and you'll have that probably with the CMR maximum not to exceed. So, within a couple months, you'll have a big chunk of that bond issue kind of established already, so we'll, we'll know pretty well in the next couple months where we're going to sit financially. So, with that.
Okay. Questions for Jeff on the report?
No questions, I'm just going to say, you know, we always get so focused on the new high school and the new middle school, that it's easy to overlook the other smaller but larger projects that we approved at the same time. So it's exciting to see how many students are going to benefit from the money that we're able to have, so that it's not just the people who are going to these two new buildings, but really students across the district at multiple buildings will see the benefit of reinvesting in those schools and updating them, so.
Right. And I think you'll see in the capital budget, and we try to do that, is, we're going to try to, some of those preventive maintenance things, we're going to try to roll with those projects and integrate them where you can make some, you know, economic sense and savings with that. So we're trying to budget those at the same time. That didn't make the bond, but we're going to try to put those into the capital as well. So you'll see some of that coming, and we'll try to break that out for you, so you see that.
Thank you.
Okay?
Okay. Could I get a motion to acknowledge the report in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you, Jeff.
You know, President Albert, I have the, I'm blessed to work with a lot of great people in the position I am. I'll tell you, one of the unsung heroes in our district is Jeff Kreider. It's amazing what he gets done and how the unassuming manner in which he does it, so I felt compelled to say that.
Thank you.
All right. Speaking of another star, we now have Business Manager Veek to give us our third-quarter financial report.
Thank you. Yeah, we just went over the budget. We spent a work session in our last session of the budget hearing, going over our budget, kind of touched briefly anyway on where we thought we stood, so this can be a really brief report. We're three-fourths of the way through the year, we're about two-thirds of our way through expenditures in the general fund. We did say we were going to come into the good, and part of that is that one-time money that we didn't know we were going to get this fiscal year when we budgeted last year. That's about $900,000 that didn't get spent somewhere else. So we're going to come in, we're going to come into the good with that, and I'm thinking overall, we're going to come in about a million, a million and a half on the plus side instead of spending the fund balance this year, so that looks fairly good. Don't hold that against my time. In special ed, we're, we budgeted about $661,000 into the fund balance. We show we're probably going to come in about that level. Might come in slightly high on the, or low on the revenue side, but slightly high on the, or to the good on the expenditure side. So we're looking like we're pretty much on track for that. Capella, it's hard to always tell when you look at that, because we spend so much of it upfront, and our revenues come in 50% in this fall, or November, and 50% in May, but it looks like we should be on track there as well. So with that, I'd just ask you to acknowledge the report, and I'll stand by for any questions. Thanks.
Questions for Todd on the third-quarter financials? If not, could I get a motion to acknowledge the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
If not, Todd, thank you for your hard work. Would echo Brian's comments to Jeff with, with you as well. There's a ton of work that gets done that I think most of us, we don't see the day-to-day work that, that goes into running a business this size, and everybody carries their load, and I certainly appreciate that. And the financials, of course, is a huge piece of what we as board members do, so thank you for your good work. If no discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, that motion carries. Any other business to come before the board? If not, may I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned. Thank you.